It is 6:30 and I will be calling our meeting to order. Our first... First, are there any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay, there's not. And now we'll need to approve the select board minutes. I'll be not voting in this since I was not at the last meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, okay. Please take a look at the minutes, see if you notice anything, or have anything to say about them. Okay.
And I can still, I can still sign off on this even though I wasn't here for the first part. Because I couldn't make it to the 5:30.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. That's a separate meeting. Yes, so you're, you're fine.
Okay, cool.
So I'm gonna call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Passes. Moving on. Uh, pay orders.
I'll make a motion for 99,688.57.
Okay, are there any additions to that?
No.
Okay, great, so we have a second as well from Rob. Uh, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All aye. And no opposed? Moving on. We do not have a road commissioner, and we probably will not this evening. Anything that we should discuss, Sandy?
Um, just on that North End Drive I mentioned to him.
Okay.
And he is very happy with the work that they did on North End Drive.
Okay.
He's very happy or is not?
Yes, he's very happy.
Okay. Well, great. Okay.
I had a brain, you know, maybe a brain cramp the other day, but, um, if I was had concerns about Charlie and whoever's plowing up in East Wallingford and up on the hill, up on top. That every time they get stuck, which is quite frequently, they have to walk to the closest store, there's no cell service, radios aren't gonna work up there, there's no repeater to get it back down here. So a thought that I had was putting a small GPS unit in every vehicle that the town owns. And they will, every 15 minutes, send a signal back to a computer or whatever of their location. So if somebody hasn't heard from Charlie in an hour
Yeah.
or whatever, they could look at the computer and say, "Oh, he was here and his truck is still there." He's stuck.
Will your cell phone do that?
No cell service.
No, but the, the newer phones now can do the SOS.
But these guys, not everybody has.
Right, but I wonder even in that, in that kind of frame, do we do more something like a spot where you can actually just send a message? Because you can do a quick text message on those.
Well, I was just thinking, if something just sits in the truck
Yeah.
and is plugged in and it just runs all the time.
Right, right.
For...
LoJack, literally.
Yeah, it's the same idea, but it costs about, per unit, it's about a hundred dollars a year. But for...
How many units would we need?
Well, you got, I would put greater than, you know, everything that's on the road, so six or eight of them. So you spend $600 a year on somebody's, even if you start out with two or three and just put it into trucks now, I'm just, like I said, that always concerns me when they're plowing around up there and they get stuck or break down. You know, it's 20 below zero. They gotta walk to the closest house to find service. This way they may walk to the closest house, but you're gonna also know where they are probably before they can get you, you know, get hold of you. You can, you know, you can mark it every five minutes to notify them. So if somebody hasn't heard from them in 30 minutes, they can literally log on and say, "Oh, he's been here for 30 minutes." He's stuck.
The GPS does not work at all without cell service?
No, GPS will work anytime.
Right.
It sends, it sends a tone out, which in turn, to a satellite, which in turn...
This thing has got, uh, "Find my phone" on it. And if I put my, uh, authorized view to know where I am everywhere...
Only works if there's cell service.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, it only works when there's cell service.
So the, the new, newest, newest ones, and I think, so that'd be the fifth, of iPhones, the iPhone 14, 15.
This is a 15 Pro.
Yeah, so that...
Will not, will not notify where, where my phone is unless it's cell service.
But it has emergency calling with the SOS. When you have the little SOS on the screen, that's emergency calling.
Yes.
So, yeah, but they would have to have an updated, like mine's a 13, I think.
Right.
It lets me do it.
Yeah. But I was, like I said, you know, now we're talking a townwide cell service plan, which is a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, and all, yeah, exactly the idea that you use that for, yeah, but it...
So it was just something, I mean, we don't have to decide on it tonight, it was just something I was trying to find a way to get him coverage upon.
Okay.
Is that something, does that get, is it like a portable unit that just goes in the vehicle?
Yeah, it just, it's literally just a, they have them for dogs, they hook them around the neck.
I'm just, I was just wondering if we buy...
You just change the back, yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering if you, if we buy one or two, they just get one from each vehicle.
You could just put one in
Yeah.
in the two, in the two big trucks, I mean, those are the ones that you have the power most.
But if they're portable, could you move it to any vehicle you're in?
Just on the clip?
Yeah.
So, because they, they use...
As long as you know who's got it.
Okay.
Yeah, because the, the spot ones are made for hikers, so they're meant to be able to be light and be able to have it, and then
Yeah.
they have the ability to be able to send a message, not to emergency services, but you can send a message to like
Yeah.
to Sandy or anybody, like, or maybe back to the, um, if we had a receiver down there.
Right, yeah.
If we could get a couple and try them out, do it like as a pilot and see how it is.
I mean, the, the hundred dollars that you pay is for somebody, actually, I believe, to monitor them.
Right, exactly.
And if they monitor them, they monitor them and let you know, "Hey, he hasn't moved in 20 minutes."
Right.
Who's gonna watch that?
They just want, you could monitor the two, but they want, they want to give you the service so they can...
Right, and that's where it's like a hundred dollars a year.
Okay.
But, I don't, you know.
Who, who would they notify then?
Well, they would know...
Whoever the emergency contact was, so you, you set up, you set it up with whoever the emergency contact...
And here's a list of everybody you call.
You can have multiple people on it.
First Alert, that doesn't work?
No, because you gotta have a landline.
Okay.
You gotta, you gotta have, well, you can do it with a cellphone, but you gotta have service of some sort.
Some, some type, yeah. My wife's Volvo died in front of a heart and cricket, and she got some people to call me because there's nothing...
Right. There is now. Yes, okay, so...
I mean, it's better up there, cell service, because once, if you're down in East Wallingford, you're good. You got something out of it.
South Wallingford's sketchy too.
Yeah, well, yeah, yep. But it's just, like I said, it was just something I was thinking about the other day. It's just, uh, you know, you don't have, they don't do a thing, just, just put it in their truck and leave them.
So we can discuss this later?
Yeah.
Okay.
We got plenty of time, it's just something to kinda put on the radar for future discussion.
Thank you for the idea. So for future discussion.
That's all.
Thank you very much. It's a good one.
Richard Corchak's wife.
Okay. Moving on.
Richard Corchak's wife.
We are on to honorable mentions.
Oh, Julie had a question on...
Oh, question on, yes, let's see, Julie didn't put it, I was gonna ask her, must've put it elsewhere. Okay, so if you look, the, um, state's already sent second and third quarter highway state aid payments. It's their $22,754.54 each, along with an extra $20,000 due to the Fiscal Year 24 Budget Adjustment Act for flood-impacting municipalities. Julie will credit number 4502 Highway State Aid, unless we want to earmark it elsewhere. Sandy, is there anything else we need to earmark that for right now? Then I'm good with it going to what Julie suggests, everybody else?
Agreed.
So we're, we're good with that.
Okay.
Can you read honorable mentions at Suzie's name without you?
Sure, um, so in honorable mentions, Richard and Suzie Corchak, um, donated a mini fridge. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, and Maria French, Wallingford Day Committee, and all the vendors, volunteers, and citizens who participated in the annual Wallingford Day Celebration. Um, and Brian Ferguson, thank you for installing a surveillance system at the concession stand. Yes. Okay, public comments. Are you here public or on the agenda?
No, I, I just told Shannon I would be here with a rec, uh...
For the subcommittees.
Subcommittee.
Oh, excellent. Oh, great, what, wonderful, great, okay. So moving on. Set the municipal tax rate. Review fiscal year 24 end-of-year figures, so everyone has the profit and loss budget sheet. And so, let's see.
So I just wanted to mention the state gave us our fourth quarter payment today.
Oh, good. Oh, well, great.
To help with flood relief, so they...
Oh, that's great.
You need it.
Wonderful.
Uh, so the profit and loss for the year-end, we, we ended the year with a surplus of $19,000. $926, $96, and this is the same as what I talked about at the last meeting, so... So we will use that to reduce our, uh, the amount of taxes we need to raise, so if you look at my memo.
Yeah.
So the school tax, the homestead rate is, uh, 1.6978 this year. And that's up seven cents. And the non-homestead education tax rate is 1.8098, and that's up 15 cents.
Okay.
Our newly grant, uh, the grant list is, uh, 2,349,723, and then you have to add the 3 zeros, so... So our fiscal year 25 town taxes to be raised is $1,080,388, and then we minus the surplus carryover.
Uh huh.
So we need to raise $1,060,461,04.
Okay.
So we did the calculations and we come to .4513. And last year it was .4158, so we're up 3 and 1/2 cents.
Okay.
Local agreement, that's the, uh, like the, the rescue squad,
Okay.
rotary, rotary, the buildings that, that don't pay taxes, that, and the veterans that get the exemption, so that's .0065, so last year it was .0063, so really not much of a change. And then the fire district tax, which they give me the, the amount that they need to raise, and it's .0896, so all you need to do is re, approve the municipal tax rate of .4513. And I did, I did the calculation on 100,000
Okay.
from, if you live in the village, which is Fire District 1 or 3, based on a hundred thousand dollar value, and you're a resident, it's gonna go up about 112 dollars. Compared to last year.
Okay. Do we need to...
It's not the 20% that...
Right, it's not 20.
We're not talking about...
Right, which is great.
Yes.
That's fabulous.
I'll move to, set the rate.
Okay.
45, 13.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Julie. So moving on. Do we just do...
Homestead declaration.
Okay, so no homestead declaration. We have here, do we want to assess late penalties to those who failed to file a timely homestead declaration? The state allows up to a 3% penalty if the non-residential rate is higher than the homestead education property rate, and up to 8% if the non-residential rate is lower than the homestead.
When's the filing deadline?
Education prop...
Always, uh, April 15.
Oh, okay.
In the past, the board has assessed the penalties, but has waived them occasionally on a case-by-case basis.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, impose the penalties.
Okay. Do we have a second?
This has been going on long enough, people should know when it is.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed? Moving on. The, um, town hall boiler replacement and heat pump update. We did not get any bids
We did not.
For either the boiler or the heat pumps. And...
We did get a message, um, from Bill Lawson that he plans to submit a bid later this week. Sure, maybe this weekend, or this...
Okay. And so we will be getting a bid later this week from Bill Lawson.
A bid.
A bid.
That was due today.
Yes.
Due, due on the first.
Due as the first. Due the first, and we're gonna get it, right. Because the way the RFP was written, we can't accept that bid.
Can we make an amendment?
Well, we gotta have three bids anyways.
Right.
So we're gonna get one.
Right.
So...
We'll put them out again.
Well, my recommendation
Yep.
is we change the RFP a little bit and consolidate it down to the original plan that was talked about, which was heat pumps on the first floor.
But it had an option to give both parts to it, so if...
But nobody did, nobody, right, sorry, I mean, I had Sandy bring it down.
No, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So nobody bid on it
Right.
the way it was written. So I'm trying to think of a way to get this done, I mean, heat pumps are the way to go in here, down here, anyways, right now. And we've already approved the money, the funds for it, for the heat pumps down here. Why not redo the RFP so it's just for the first floor heat pumps?
And do the boiler too.
Well, we can keep the boilers separate, but do it in common. Just say, "I need a, we need a..."
Two RFPs.
Right.
Because we didn't get any bids for the boiler either.
Huh?
We didn't get any bids for the boiler either.
So what, what I did is I ran, just real quick ran through, it eliminated everything that talked about upgrading the electric, everything that, for the upstairs, additional heat pump and heads and, and the recon, you know, the rebuilding of that, dropped it to just the first floor. And go, to go back to what we originally agreed for.
Sandy, do we have any, do we have any ability to see if anybody opened up the RFPs? Like, how do we, we just put them on the website, or do we put them on to...
No, I put them on the website and I emailed them to about 10 or 12 contractors.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a kind of a...
And Bill was the only one... Bill was the only one that showed up for the site visit too.
Right.
Which is very telling, because you think if you're gonna bid on heat pumps, you would come to the site visit.
Right.
I mean, I mean, even more so than if, than the boiler replacement, I mean, I think maybe, I mean, I would come to the boiler replacement, site visit too, but heat pumps especially, because it's very specific, so... Yeah, and Bill was the only one that showed up.
Okay.
Also, I think with the, I mean, like, our, our purchasing policy said we have to go up to bid. We did, we followed that process, I mean, we can't force people to bid, so if we get one bid, I mean, you can evaluate that on whether you want to accept it or not. Can't make people bid, so, but we followed the process.
Yeah.
But was this, this true, you have to have that a law?
I mean, that's...
It's not a law, it's the town policies. Well, I think it's the, the state's recommendation.
Okay.
Right.
And the town follows that recommendation. Now, I'm just concerned that that is, just reading that RFP is way over what
Nobody wants to do.
That people want to attack.
I guess the only thing I, I wonder is we put out a bid process also, RFP on the boiler only.
Right, and the reason people didn't bid on that is because it was way too complicated.
To put in a boiler?
No.
We got actually feedback on that.
Yeah, we got feedback that the, the prints that the engineer put in for us were way too
Complex.
Complex, yes, complex and
Overkill.
And that's overkill
Oh.
of what was needed to replace that boiler, till they said, "We're not bidding on it."
Oh.
So...
So we make it simple.
And we put it to replace it in kind, exactly what's there, except propane.
Yeah.
And vetted out the front, you know, you can keep a few of the things, but...
And, and each bidder can, can design their own method of, this is what we're gonna do, put this machine in.
Yeah, as long as it's...
As long as it meets whatever BTU that puts up.
Right.
So hooked up down there.
We just think we've kicked this can down the road, this, these, especially the heat pumps. Should've been in or at least started.
Justin, what do you think on all those?
I, I, I wonder if, like, because if we, if we do that and then we're asking, we're, we have to basically completely disregard the past one, right?
It's past due, we got no bids. I need them all.
But I'm just saying, if we have Bill saying that he is going to submit something.
Yeah, I mean, you can table this until two weeks from now.
I think, I think if you, uncomplicated, there's gonna be a lot of people who wanna...
I would say, since...
And I do think Tom Ford's could come tonight too, so...
Yeah.
I, I think that since Bill has said that he will put in a bid, that we see what comes from that, table this for two weeks, and then further this discussion then.
So he was the only one that came to our site visit too.
Yes.
That's for the heat pumps?
Uh, yeah.
For the heat pumps, right, Sandy?
Yeah.
Right.
He didn't, he didn't bid on boiler.
No, he was...
He had no bid on the boiler.
Right.
My con, my concern with, I guess, with waiting for Bill's estimate. Bill knows the bidding process.
He can still bid if we put it out again.
Yeah, but, but just, Bill knows the bidding process. I think the reason he didn't bid on it, because he didn't really want it, or but now he's gonna bid on it because nobody else did, so... I mean, because he kinda knows that nobody else bid on it. So it's not a, it's, it's not a, I got nothing against Bill, I use him for everything, but it's not a fair bidding process.
Right.
If he knows there's no bids and now he's gonna bid on it, we take his bid.
No, it's not a bid.
It's gonna be higher, right, not, not saying Bill wouldn't do that.
No, for sure, right, but, but yeah.
But if it potential to be higher, then it would've been if it was a true bidding process.
Right.
Right.
Right, no, no, for sure, yeah, I understand that, I just... I, I also want, I, I also wonder about, like, is, we, we have definitely been involved in this process, I think, more than we thought we were going to be. Um, because with the Energy Committee, but the Energy Committee also did a tremendous amount of work.
Yes.
And if we go through this after this is their recommendation, and then we go back on it and say, "Actually, we're gonna just do this," I just worry what that, what signals that sends to other committees when they start putting things in to say, "We want you to do all this work, but then we're gonna make a completely different decision." But I, I understand where you're coming from, for sure, but...
They're forcing us to do the work. There, there's no consensus on, on the, about what to do. There's, there's people who want the boiler and people who don't want the boiler on there, and so we keep hearing, "You do the work."
Let's split 50/50, right down the middle of that board.
Yeah.
On what they wanna do.
So we have to.
Is there anything that prevents us from putting both back out?
I'm not gonna feel sorry for them.
Like, who, because, because that would also be the kind of like A/B testing of, if we take Mark's pared down, this is just, we need to get this done so that we have something. And then still re-put out that other one out at the same time, there's nothing that says that we have to go with a bid once we decide, like, they're still gonna, then we can see if people actually put it out there.
Right.
How long does that have to even be out, because this is something that needs to be, a decision needs to be made fast, so we want it done before...
Right.
We need bids first.
Right.
Yeah.
But if we think that there may be one potentially coming for at least part of this issue.
Right.
Because I think you, I think you have a, an excellent point that that was the thing that we all determined to be the most, the most prudent thing, and what everybody seemed to agree on is that downstairs heat pumps. But I just wonder, because it would be really interesting to be able to see if, in what they came up with matched with everything, if we get any bid. So if, and also if we wanna make sure that we have this be fair with what Bill's planning on doing, if we put out the original bid, the original RFP again, along with a alternate, uh, RFP
Right.
at the same time, people are gonna choose which one they wanna go for, and then that'll give us to say, "Oh, actually, we were right, that, that, it was just too complicated or too much that people didn't want it."
So you say, put out a, put out two RFPs for the heat pumps?
Right, so one being the full-on, just so that, and also we can say then that if Bill decides to put in for this one, then we have a fair process, because somebody else could come back and do it. And then we also have it for just the heat pumps for a, just for the first floor, and just think that...
And then, what about the furnace?
Well, your plan is with the furnace as well, correct?
Well, that's a separate, that was a total separate RFP
Okay.
that went out.
So put out the furnace one as well, or a pared-down version of the furnace as well?
We'll have a pared-down version of the furnace, so...
Which, like, maybe take out the, the, um, the engineering diagrams and really just get it down to, this is the amount of BTUs, this is the amount of space we have.
Yeah, yeah, we need this.
Make the whole engineering diagram.
Yes.
Yeah, jeez.
Yeah.
Sandy, yeah, well, I, I think, yeah, we need to have it figured out soon.
Meaning, what I did on the, what I did on the, and this is quick, on the, on that is, just X-Delt's on, it's like the second page, and
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
just X-Delt some on the backside of that. Backside of your right hand.
Okay, so taking out the three-phase stuff and...
Yeah, I took out the three-phase, because if we just do heat pumps, it's not even, we need to upgrade the panel.
Okay.
So... Because a lot of people look at that and they're gonna change the panel to a, you know, it's just some things I don't know if they want it.
The other, the other thing, I don't know how much it costs to advertise on it, but like, one thing that I've used before is, for my own contracting businesses, is BidNet. Which is just a, a state, a countrywide RFP bidding process. And they have a category, so this would be heating and cooling for a municipality, and it's all municipalities.
Right.
Um, and that might give us maybe some people outside of just the, what we, who we know and outside of the Rutland County area. Just to see. Because like, there's, I know on VPR every morning, they talk about the, what, New England heat pumps, the people that, that are out in, um, just like on the New Hampshire border and kind of the east side of the state, just wondering if, because we didn't get it from our selected people, just open it up to really anybody. And then we'll, we'll see if anything comes through. But...
The state also, they've seen it on their, um, I wouldn't say building, it's, by the buildings and grounds, they have a link, or every department has a link to RFPs.
Right.
And sometimes they include statewide RFPs that include the towns, we've seen that a few times. Towns are doing this project, they've listed their RFP on the state website.
Right, on that, under that particular...
So that may be another spot to...
Yes.
So, I mean, it's, I'm just, that was my concern is...
Yes.
Well, I went on to, I went on to Efficiency Vermont, because they have a bunch of rebates on heat pumps right now. And they have this, uh, a list of professionals to contact, so I went on there, and that's where I got about a dozen of the contractors.
Okay.
Okay.
Which makes sense, because then we know it's a verified source of people, we don't have to then do a background or talk with them or anything like that. But being that we got Diddly Squad.
Some of them could be, right now it's the thing and we are behind the ball, so everybody's booked and doesn't wanna have a job.
Well, that's a lot, too, Carol.
It's, it's why, I mean, we're all in Vermont. And there's, I mean, everybody else, because there are, there are a lot of money and everything else, and then heat pumps have been pushed off everywhere.
And we'll be okay, is if, without doing the heat pumps this year, we'll be okay if the furnace gets replaced. So we got to have one of these other.
I mean, we'd be okay if we just had the heat pumps too.
Yeah, yeah, for one way or the other, we've got to have something in.
Yeah.
Before winter.
Yeah.
So do we?
I, I, so I say we do cross it, we're really just re-establish the two that we've already created, and then your modified one, removing the second floor and the wall units for the face, three-phase.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I, that's I think makes sense.
And then, yeah, just reissue, we got two, which 20 are.
Yes.
And then the same thing with the furnace, I think that, because nobody even, didn't want to touch it, I think we just give the BTUs on it.
Yeah, simplify it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's almost a.
I'd be surprised, you know.
Just in time.
Just in time.
I've been on municipal stuff before.
Goodness, we're talking about it right now.
What's that?
They're talking about it right now.
You're, you're on, you're on, on time right now.
Holy moly.
So we've been discussing the fact that we got no bids.
Yeah.
And so the idea, Mark looked over the bid, and he has simplified it, he's taken out, um, the three-phase plan, and kept it just to heat pumps on the first floor. So what we were just discussing from Justin's input, was to put out three RFPs, a simplified version of the furnace one, without the engineer specifications on it.
Dump it, dump it down to replace it in kind.
Yes.
In kind.
Yes, um, the revised version of the heat pump, and the original heat pump, put all three RFPs out, and see what we get.
So did you update them on?
I gave them, they have it right in front of them, that.
Yeah. So, um, so I talked to Bill this morning, I don't know if you.
I told him that.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I don't know, I mean, at that point, so the RFP has run its course, right? So the purpose of the RFP is to make sure that we have a fair bidding process, right? So that has, we've checked that box.
Right.
Um, Bill has every intention of bidding on this, but he's been crazy busy, hasn't gotten to it, he's, he's planning on putting something in this week. I think, and I apologize, the paper I just sent out today, I didn't get it sooner, really it's based on, actually, Rob, in the last meeting, you had mentioned that you would prefer to see a viable plan as opposed to options, and that's why I was thinking, maybe I'll try to format this a little bit differently, into, you know, communicate it as a, as more of a plan, and I incorporated Mark's data, because I think your data was, was very good as well, informative in terms of the different types of heating, and the efficiency of that from a BTU perspective, which impacts the cost. So I think, if we can take, if I can just, I apologize for missing, I thought I would do it later in the meeting, but if we can take a step back, take five minutes, let me explain this, and then kind of reassess where we think makes sense to go from there. Okay, thank you. So, um.
I'd like to hear what you said.
So let me just say, first of all, that the, so I just put this out together this morning, so the, I sent it to the Energy Committee, where our meeting happens to be tomorrow night, so we haven't had a chance to discuss it, they've seen this, but we haven't discussed it yet, so I'll put that caveat out there. But, so the data that Mark sent around last meeting, I think it was, um, you know, the objective here, of course, is to heat, heat and cool the town hall with minimum impact financially, both upfront costs, more importantly, long-term operating costs. And there's also, as everyone understands, there's environmental impact, depending on which option you choose as well, so both of those things are consideration. The overall goal, what I think makes the most sense, is to try to minimize both the financial impact and the environmental impact of the decisions that we're making for the town, right? So when you look at, that's these three columns, it kind of breaks down, there's financial impact, and there's environmental impact. The financial impact is different whether you're talking about with solar versus without solar, right? So in each of these columns, the best option or the lowest impact is at the top, and it's just listed sequentially. So that first column, financial impact without solar, is essentially the data that Mark circulated last meeting, right? Heat pumps are the most efficient, then wood pellets, then natural gas, then propane, then oil, then electric resistance, right, in terms of cost, if you don't have solar. If you do have solar, and you have solar such that it's, it's the capacity of the electrical use, then the electrical use of your buildings, then the, um, the resistance becomes more efficient, more cost-efficient than some of the, the other fuels, okay? From an environmental perspective, the heat pumps and the electric, again, if you have solar, the electric is, is minimal impact, and solar, the wood pellets are carbon-based, but they're renewable, and then the fossil fuels will be below that, propane's generally viewed as more environmentally friendly than natural gas, okay? So in terms of, of a proposed plan, if, if Bill does in fact put in, put in a bid this, this week, and you have an opportunity to see that at your next meeting or whatever, and it's a reasonable plan, because we think we have a good understanding of, although we haven't seen any actual bid numbers, we think we have a pretty good understanding of what these, these relative costs are for the different systems, okay? So when you look at this, this table, right, and you look at the upper right-hand corner, right, essentially the financial impact with solar, and the environmental impact, the best option is heat pumps, the second best option is the resistance, and the heat, the idea would be the heat pumps would be your primary, resistance would be backup, translating into a plan, to Rob's point. 2024, this year, we get the bid from, um, from Bill, and you determine, is this a reasonable bid or not to put in? Put the heat pumps in, you got your heat pumps in, your most, most efficient heating and cooling is installed. Uh, the second point here, conduct the oil burner checkup, I think is already done, right? So that's to, to make sure that that, that makes it through as a supplemental heat for this winter. The, uh, electric resistance wall mounts, as we've talked about in the past, it's, it's a very inexpensive insurance policy, in case, even though we've done the, the maintenance on the oil burner, in case that dies this year, we have that secondary supplemental heat source in place. Next year, we, and we're actually, we're actually working on this now, but in terms of installing, it would be next year, 2025, get the solar panels in, and then look closer at the supplemental heat, right? So is it in fact, um, electric resistance? Does propane, propane make more sense? I added wood, wood pellets here, just because, based on the, the, excuse me, the way things fall out, if, you know, wood pellets are, are better both financially and environmentally than propane, while we can at least take a look at that. My understanding is that the Energy Committee actually did look at that before, before I joined, and I think they ruled it out based on, um, inability to like, store the pellets, not a good, not a good place to put the pellet hopper.
Gotcha.
So we can, we can look at it again, just to, just to confirm one way or the other, but like I said before.
Historical aspect of the outside too, because you'd have to have a hopper outside if you're really wanting to make it efficient.
Yeah, so it'd have to be in the back somewhere if you're doing it.
Right, but yeah, but whether or not they said.
So there's probably, that's probably, um, there's probably not a way to go, but it's something we could look at just to be, be, um, be comprehensive about it. So.
Well, I'll go to it.
So I think that's, that's what, you know, in terms of a recommended plan, I think that, that would be a good approach.
So do you have, you said that, wait, a few minutes ago, you have kind of, in your mind, enough, enough information what to judge of Bill Lozen's estimate if he came in, because what they were talking about before is, um, if Bill, any contractor put in a bid now, knowing nobody else had put in a bid.
Yeah.
Are you, do you feel like you have enough knowledge to say, "Yeah, this is right where we were thinking the price would be," or is this higher because there's no, um, yeah?
Well, so a lot of the, a lot of the estimates that went into our information that we provided you, just to help you compare the options, a lot of that information came from our local expert, right? So.
Right.
He's already provided a lot of those numbers, so it's, it's, um, I don't think.
That's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Is there any reason why Robbie didn't put a bid in?
Why Robbie didn't?
Well, because he helped out, like, figuring this out in terms of, he is an electrician that is.
Well, I think it's a, it's more of a, it's more of a, I mean, heating installed primarily. I mean, there's, there's electrical component to it.
Okay, okay.
Uh, I, my biggest concern is getting something in here now, and I mean, not in six months, right now, because.
Yeah.
So, and, and the reason I said, "Let's simplify all the RFPs," is if somebody will come in and put six heads down here, in one unit out back, on a pad, and pipe it in, that's what they have time for, then that's what we put on an RFP, that's the end of, that's what we get. It will save us from putting in a new burner, or a new more boiler.
Yeah.
Yes, the upstairs still runs on the boiler, but it has minimal heat, if any, upstairs anyways, for the winter, so that's where I'm coming from. We, something has to be done to this poor old system right now.
Yeah.
And if we can, without, you know, because Bill's going to come in, you know, I, I have, and it's not Bill, I have, I have a problem with a contractor, regardless of who it is, coming in after the fact and saying, "Hey, I'll give you a bid on it." I just, I've dealt with contractors for 40 years, and, and then not saying it bad about Bill, it's in their general interest to say, "Hey, I don't have to cut all my costs, I can now get what I need to get out of it."
Yep.
So, not saying Bill will do that, but I've just, that's.
It's incumbent on us, we need to do it.
Right, so, but that's where I was coming from.
To do, to do government properly.
We need.
We don't, we don't, we don't take a bid like that, we go out.
We need.
When I make the motion, we, we go, we send out those three modified RFPs.
So, so in the spirit of simplification.
Do we have a second? Hold on.
Yeah.
Do we have a?
We have this.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second for that motion? Do you want to hear the motion one more time?
Just to move forward with the three different RFPs, two being modified, one being the exact same.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll second that, only for discussion, but.
Yeah, good, then I can, let's move the question. Get it done.
Well.
Yeah.
So the reason, the reason we proposed that, just so you understand, we've stepped on other committees' toes so much that we're trying to not step on your toes, um, but the reason we proposed that is for that reason that I was always saying. The original RFPs, the date was August 1st. I understand Bill didn't have a chance to get his in. We can't do a lot about that, because the original date was here.
Can't do anything about it.
So the new, a new RFP would be, in my eyes, the right way to do it, and have Bill bid on the new RFP, because the other one to my, in my, in my mind, the other one is done, it was due August 1st, you know, we haven't given anybody else extensions, but nobody else has come forward. Uh, at the same time, as I said before, we need to do something, and we need to do it now, uh, without making it a, you know, a whole convoluted thing, if we could get somebody to say, "Hey, I'll bid on that if this is all you're going to do right now," with the idea of going future. I understand where you're going with the solar, and, and I can see saving the town money, a little concerned on the price of solar, where they're going to go, you know, whether the grid's going to be able to accept it, you know, there's questions.
Where are we going to put it?
Well, yes, but, so, but that's why we had discussed putting out a, you know, simplifying the RFP, pulling out only enough for the first floor basics, to get it in and get it done, and that's where we were coming from, so you understand where our, why we made that motion to, to do that.
I think that's, I think that's a good, good suggestion.
And the same thing with the furnace, is bare bones.
Well, so let, so let's look, so I agree with the point of simplification, let's get something in that we can get in, and let's simplify in order to accomplish that goal, right? So simplifying, if you take the existing RFP, and let's simplify that, so we've already taken out the, the need for the alternate service, because we know we don't, we're not going to, we're going to have to access something if we need it.
Right.
Let's take out, you could take out potentially the, the wall mount resistance heaters, right? You could take out potentially the, the need upfront for the smart thermostats. You, so you do it in a structured way, to figure out what, what makes the most sense to take out, what are we, what are we, you know, gaining simplicity without giving up a lot, right? You could potentially put it out as an option to bid it for, you know, the, the first floor and the second, you know, and the second floor or first floor only, your choice. If Bill says, "I can, I can get you the first floor and the second floor," or anybody else, whatever, whoever, it's going out as an RFP, anybody can bid on it. If I can get you the first and the second floor this year, would you do that? But when you start talking about multiple RFPs, now I think you run into the question of, okay, well, what is this town focused on?
So I guess the only, the reason why we put out for multiple RFPs was to honor the work that the Energy Committee had done.
On the first one.
On the first one, so not have you do all this work and then have the select board say, "Thank you very much, we're going to do this now."
So they have to work with the Energy Committee.
Still are doing that now.
First one, the work that was done on the first RFP was done by an external, we've already discussed last time, that that's not the way we want to go going forward. So to put out a new RFP for boiler, we're not ready to do that yet, because there's some work that needs to be done to determine what that's going to look like, right? So I don't, you're not going to be able to, if you're going to talk about the, the heat pump RFP, which, all information says heat pumps, heat pumps now, heat pumps.
Yes.
Right?
I.
Distractions from heat pumps is contrary to what you're trying to accomplish, but your goal is to get something in this year, simple, if your simplification, simplify on heat pumps, take the heat pump RFP, make it simpler by taking out the electrical.
Take a look at this real quick.
Because that, that is.
That's what Mark.
Their front's back on the pages. So I just went through and took out.
Maybe this is the single RFP we could add.
I don't think we should, I completely removed the option of the upstairs though.
Yeah, and I, and the upstairs.
It may be easier, you know, to just do it all together.
The upstairs, really, I didn't read a lot about the upstairs in there.
Okay.
So I'm just looking at the blueprint, what am I doing?
The, you'll see, I crossed, yeah, I just crossed it out. Just pretty much eliminated anything with the power on the van, increase the panel.
And did you eliminate the second floor as well?
Uh, I didn't see a lot, my luck is, if there was anything about the second floor.
It's.
Okay, because you mentioned.
Did I take it out?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Oh, so it's taken out the second floor?
But we could put it.
We could put it in.
As an option.
As an option. What do you think?
This is our priority, the first floor.
Or should we just go with, forget the second floor, just concentrate on the first?
Well, I think if you, I mean, I mean, the idea is to get a bid and get it in now, so if the contract, if the contractor believes that it's going to take a lot more time to, to do the second floor, then you could say, "Okay, it's an option to just do the first floor, our goal is to get it in." You're going to have a date, a completion date anyway, you're not, you're going to have a completion date before the heating season, so you're going to say, "We need this done by, you know, by the end of November, or beginning of November, whatever you determine."
Is this discussion about the motion still?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So, yeah, we're, so, so you're kind of, you looked over what we had said, pretty much took out.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, did take out a lot, most of the stuff is kind of formalities anyways.
Don't worry about stepping on the Energy Committee's team.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, you guys, we're trying to do, we're trying to do all, we all have the same objective.
Okay.
It's get the best system, primary heating and cooling into the town hall, the lowest cost now and for the future, and get it done this year, so that there's no problem with heating.
So Rob, based on that, would you like to amend your motion?
No, no.
Do you want to keep it at the three RFPs, or do we want to amend it to one?
What's the cost of? What's the cost of?
Right?
Well-
Confusion, yes.
I think if you, I think everybody would be in agreeance if you took your motion and said, we're gonna send out a revised RFP for the heat pumps on the first floor.
Yes.
Right now.
Yeah.
I want the boiler.
Well-
Why don't you, why don't you, why don't you?
Because of mine.
Why don't you want a price to the boiler? Why don't you want a price to the boiler?
We've given you a price.
Yes. So, yes, so the, yeah.
You can vote on Rob's motion, and if, see how it goes.
Vote on Rob's motion? Okay, all those in favor of Rob's motion?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No, no.
So, the only reason why-
I have a motion that we send out a RFP for the boiler.
Do we have a second?
I can't second that, it's a stop.
We don't have a second on that.
I think, and, I'd like to make a motion that we send out a modified RFP for the first floor, heat pumps, with a, maybe an option in it, real quick, if the second floor is deemed feasible at this time to do it, without holding up the first floor.
Second that one, okay.
All those in favor of motion?
What's the motion again?
Just say that again.
So, my motion is-
I made a motion that didn't get seconded, so that's gone, right?
Right, right.
So, my motion was to send out the, a modified RFP for the heat pumps on the first floor as a primary, and with an option to that, if it's feasible to do now, to extend it to the second floor.
Heat pumps?
Heat pumps, to the second floor. If it's feasible, and we'll not hold the project down. Very, you know, very set that way.
Yeah, so, so you're asking for two?
We're asking for one RFP with an option, for the heat pump, for the second floor heat pump.
With an optional second floor.
No boiler, and-
That doesn't sound like something you can bid on, that, that's why they're not bidding on, because-
No, you bid on the, the first floor-
So you gotta have two.
And then you take, then, then you look at the second floor-
You don't need a second RFP, we can put it on one RFP.
Just, just split it up into two pieces.
You know, somebody-
And we make that decision when the bid's coming in. The reason I said no on the furnace, we've gotta get this going.
Yeah.
We got no choice. Heat pumps is the quickest and easiest way to get going. The boiler, if it's not our primary source-
Yes.
We can give a little bit of time on it, I don't know how much, but-
I don't know why it hurts to send out an RFP for the boiler. I don't know why that's a problem.
So the boiler was brought up as a motion, the motion was not seconded, the motion that we have on the floor right now is for heat pumps on the first floor with an option for second floor, that has been seconded. I'm gonna put it to vote, all those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
And, I would like, for the, for the one that we did not second, for your, the idea of the, the boilers, it was really just because Tom was about to say about how they were not, they would not be ready to put out the information for it. No, I'm just saying.
No, but if you listen to what Justin's saying-
So, what, what I'm saying is the idea that Tom was saying that they are not ready to redo that RFP at this moment, because they have to figure out everything without the engineering.
Uh-uh.
So that's, that's the issue, is that, so if we put that out again, we're just, we're spinning wheels.
So it can't be too simple, we have to make it, uh-
It, it, you gotta know, right?
There's a certain amount of-
Three circulators, and, you know, they can tell you what you need to provide.
That's the only reason why I didn't go with that, just because of that information that we did not have before, yeah.
It's not ready, that's why.
Can you modify?
So, yes, I can, so just to this point, just to-
So, so will we have this revised RFP at the next meeting this month, for the boiler? Will we have it?
No, not just boiler, the, the heat pumps.
The heat pumps.
No, I'm talking about, are we gonna put one-
We haven't even talked about the boiler.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm talking about the boiler.
Right.
Can we get, can we get the RFP ready for next meeting?
Well, I think we should concentrate on this one first. This is gonna be the primary. If not, we're gonna be in the middle of the winter, not having a-
This is our fast, this is our fastest option.
And there's also the amount of, you know, we still, there was a larger number amount of fuel down there than expected, that we need to use up and stuff, to prolong the life of the, what we have.
So to, to your point about the, the second floor and using the oil burner as the secondary heating source, one additional advantage of, and I know we've already decided it's gonna be in there as an option, one additional advantage to doing the heat pumps on the second floor this year is that your oil burner will work less.
Right.
In that support mode, so you may, if there's a correlation between how hard it works and how long it lasts, you may get, you may get, more likely get more life out of it.
My, my thinking is that-
And you're not rolling the dice, because multiple, I mean, you have, it's the, it's the heat source, it's a brand new heat pump, primary heat pump system. And again, you have a backup oil burner in place as well, as opposed to just having your-
Your original proposal was for two?
I'm being skeptical, cause there's nobody bidding on anything, you know?
Well, I think by simplifying, reading through that RFP, I can almost understand why people were kinda backing away when, you know, the three phase was being talked about, and, you know, a lot of other issues. And I'm thinking this way, it's, it's kinda straightforward. Um, as we move forward, and solar comes more, you know, when you get closer, so we know where solar's gonna be, then you can look at the electric, you know, the electric heaters compared to the furnace, you know, we have options, but our biggest thing right now is we gotta get something in here for a heat source.
I think this is the way to do it.
And it'll give us a good year to know how much of that backup gets used. I mean, it's only one year's data, and every year's different, but-
Right.
Yeah.
Information on what we should do.
I think it might end up being, for the second floor, cheaper to do it at the same time, but I, but my concern is holding the whole project down for the second floor.
So somebody's willing to enable it.
If someone's willing to, then they have the option.
Yeah.
Well-
Do you want me to take a shot of revising based on the marks that you've made on here, or?
I'm fine with that.
Yes.
I mean, I don't-
And do you wanna do a site visit? I mean, is this gonna be like a six-week thing, like we did the last time?
We're gonna have to compress the timeframe.
Right, yeah, right.
I would compress it to like, like a month, done, out to bid, two weeks to get it back to us. Huh? Well, no, it shouldn't even be that long, but-
Well, I'm thinking, like, most of these people, anybody that's already had the opportunity to look at it and may have looked at it and said, never mind, they may not even-
Right, but this gives Bill an option when he comes in.
Right.
We know we're gonna get one bid on it.
Yeah.
But this, like I said, it may, you know-
It may help, just to help, in his case, I mean, he's been so busy, simplify for him, maybe-
Right, except if we're asking for nitpicky data, maybe not able to get it.
So if you, you looked at the, uh, RFP on the 19th, which is your next meeting approved at, we could do, what, yes, oh, can we, um-
With September 19th, will we do just a month? So that bids have to be delivered by September 19th?
Here's a calendar, if you want to look at the calendar or forget the song.
Yeah, I noticed you didn't cross out the controls, so the integrated smart thermostat.
Well, I didn't know what unit you're putting in, I know like my unit, I have a separate remote that is programmable for every head.
You will have that as part of the heat pumps?
Right.
The smart thermostat was more thinking in terms of the holistic approach. So if you were, if you were to go with what we had originally, where you would have an integrated primary and secondary, where you have some codes that you have to follow, and you wanna get the most efficient, we get data back, it's, it's, again, it's fairly minor investment for what you're getting back-
Right, it's, again, it's the time.
But again, it's, to your point about simplifying, just for now, we could potentially take that out as well.
Maybe we take that out.
Or make it as an option, I feel like.
Can we take out the wood pellets, too?
That's not-
We can send out RFP for wood pumps.
There's nothing to do with this.
No one's suggesting. So we'll take out the smart thermostats as well.
Well, I, I would, or option, the option is, just to say-
Just, like I said, the goal is, is, is timeframe.
We can have this in by this date.
We wanna install a-
If we have, if we have the upgraded, uh, the revised RFP the 19th, two weeks from tonight, and I'm thinking, what if we had a, we issue it the next day, the 20th, a site visit, maybe September 3rd, Tuesday, September 3rd, which would be, is that three weeks? Two weeks after we issue it, the site visit the 3rd, and then-
We said you got a meeting tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
And then the 16th, which would be your site-
So they could do this tomorrow, and have it done.
Which is their second meeting, well, but you, you don't have another meeting until the 16th.
And we don't have a meeting-
Or the 19th. So if you have the 19th, you approve the RFP, we issue it the next day, the 20th, the site visits September 3rd, and then your meeting's September 16th, you award it.
Yep.
Okay, yes.
Site visit, Sandy, one more time?
Tuesday, the September 3rd, just because Monday's a late Labor Day. So if we did site visit for the heat pump RFP in September, uh, Tuesday, September 3rd, and then bids due on the 16th, we could do that day, and then they meet that night, the select board meets that night.
Yep.
And then they turn it around?
We turn it around.
They turn it, so-
And you could even have something in the RFP that, it'd have to be done by like November 30th, or whatever.
Oh, yeah, we, we put that in there, yeah.
That right in the RFP, we're getting on that, it's for, it's for this winter.
Is it possible, just as possible for the downstairs by November 30th? That leaves them open for the upstairs to still bid on it, but later on?
That's po, that's, that's possibility.
Or even saying, like, if, if not all options can be completed by the state option, or the name, the first floor is minimum by November 30th, all others please add in a proposed by date that they could be done by.
I don't know if it makes that more too complicated, but at least it gives-
I know, it's, it's that other option.
Yes.
They know they're gonna do it, it's part of the bid, still go, you know, get a better price for it.
Yes.
If it was a separate RFP, it would be an option, too.
Yeah, my, my biggest concern is, can we get a better, better pay for the buck by giving an option now than putting out a separate RFP?
I don't understand it, really, because you're given an option, you give them two jobs.
Well, you have, you have crew on site, you don't have to pay for them to come in, your equipment and tools are here, so build it while you're here.
Transportation, everything's here.
If you're here, why not do both, exactly.
An option, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, just that way they're in, you'll end up saving money that way, you know, it's a one-stop shop.
Yes.
So, so they can bid on just the first floor?
Correct.
Yep.
If that's all they think they can get done.
Lose to a bidder who bids more because they bid the second floor.
Well, the second floor will be separate price than the first floor, so if, if Joe doesn't bid on the first floor, well, that's-
So we can ask them to itemize first floor and-
Right, yes.
It's still get their apples to apples.
Yeah, cause, yeah, the first floor may be cheaper, but if we're getting first floor and upstairs for just a little bit more, it makes us more sensitive that way.
We might decide to do that, yeah.
It's not necessarily who's the cheapest, it's who's gonna give us-
The best bid.
The best deal.
And in summer, in your next month or so, when you meetings, see, look at that, just, you know, off the cuff, boiler, see if we can numb that down a little bit, you know, to make it a little simpler RFP, a little less involved in what it is. Yeah, it's fine.
So where, so I'm not an expert in that, obviously, I'm not an expert in anything, but, um, the message that I understand coming out of that was that, that's complicated, that's why we went to the engineer in the first place, right? The side conversations that I had was that it was a little over-engineered, there's a way to do it much simpler.
Right.
But I don't know that that expertise to define that resides within the Energy Committee, so we're gonna be going outside for that. If I were to go outside for that, I would go to our local expert to get that information for you for free, who's the same guy who's too busy right now to-
Right.
So, it's a, it's a distraction that I think you made the right decision.
Okay.
Focus on the heat pumps, let's get it done.
We just, yeah, we just wanna make sure that, again, once we're moving forward, if something, that boiler does go, from what we understand, parts are far and few between, so if that boiler, for some reason, does die, we need something ready to go.
So we can continue modifying the RFP for the boiler.
Well, that's what we were just talking, yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll have to be done, numb down, you know, with Bill's help or whatever, or Bill can, just, you know what?
I'll bring it up tomorrow night in the Energy Committee and see what ideas they have. I would recommend against tapping into Bill for that right now. I would have him focused on this right here.
Yes.
Right, and then, once that's done, um, so we say bids by, what do we say, September 16th?
The bid would be due August 16th. Site visit the 3rd, no, September, September 16th.
Once this is done, then we'll concentrate on whatever.
Bill's gonna do the boiler, or?
Well, when he gets the money.
It's better if we don't focus on that right now, it's better if we focus on the heat pumps right now.
I, I, I think it is, okay.
I, I think the, the big thing, though, is that it's like, we're, if we invest in another boiler, right, like, these other technologies are, are more efficient and going to be better for the environment, if we invest in another boiler, we're stuck in that for another 30 years.
For 20 years.
Right.
20 years now, maybe, but still, 20 years is a long time to spend.
No, we have, we have-
But when it, but when it will-
Okay.
And it works when all the power is off.
It doesn't, though, cause it needs electricity to turn itself on.
So, hold on, we're getting, we're, we're getting, excuse me, we are getting off task right now, we are here to discuss that RFP, I think we've discussed this, I think we have a process we're going through on this, boiler discussions not for tonight, it's gonna be for another time, let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for tolerating us.
No, no.
Tom, thank you for everything.
We'll see you later, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Uh, the proposed, let's see, erosion, the erosion grant application update. So, are you here for?
Actually, I was here for the facilities.
Yep, a Wallingford facilities subcommittee has been working on a grant to implement the Elton Lake Public Beach Erosion Reduction Design completed last fall.
Yeah, and we were talking about, and certainly Carolyn and Nora, Justin can both speak to this, because we were all at the meeting, we had an onsite meeting over at the beach, reviewed the facility, looked at it inside and out, and had a very productive meeting talking about what we could see happening there, and how it could be changed and updated, brought to code for ADH, or ADA, and just a, a really great discussion about all the different possibilities over there, what it could do.
Okay.
And then the initial, um, grant that Shannon is working on is the one specifically for the erosion, that she's just putting that in. So we didn't discuss the actual erosion too, too, too much, because we're just going on the plans, and that's just driving up the information.
So that grant for the erosion, that is going through the process, being completed, and then that will be submitted?
Shannon, Shannon's working on that, yeah.
Yeah, she puts some emails out to get, clarify some information on pricing and such.
When, when is the due date on that?
August 28th.
At the end of this month.
End of the month.
I think 28th, yeah.
End of month.
So they'll be back at the next, um, select board meeting to, you'll have a copy of So they'll be back at the next select board meeting to, you'll have a copy of that grant application to review and approve.
Okay, okay.
Then the other grant would help cover the.
The improvements, so Ralph made up a design.
And what is this other grant?
The other grant is to actually upgrade the facilities itself at the same time.
Yeah, there's, cuz there's the in-kind and they will, they will get them both, they'll work very nicely together.
Right.
To get these upgrades done with minimal cost to them.
And Ralph is writing up that?
Ralph was making, he made a design to just to.
A rough one.
A rough one to actually talk about what we had talked about in the meeting.
Okay.
I've done a terrible job of being secretary and getting the minutes to everybody. I have, I recorded the meetings that I have that for it, but I don't have a typed up minutes, yeah, so.
Is there, is there an application, a grant that you're applying for with?
That's, I think, that's in September, I believe, that's.
Mid-September.
Is that right?
I think it was mid-September that one was due.
Okay.
But the idea was to get the stuff that we know we need to do because we did all the work with.
The erosion.
Yeah, the erosion and then adding on this to be able to do it the same or at least near the same time. So we talked about reconfiguring the space itself to be able to be a better flow, maybe trying to create a unisex changing room that would have doors that would go all the way up to the ceiling. So that we wouldn't have to worry about having a men's and a women's, like spaces for those things.
So how many dressing rooms?
One dressing room, but instead of the stalls being where you, right now you can see, anybody who's above four foot eight can see over into the inside. To actually have a full, like, from floor, like floor to ceiling doors. So that anybody could go in, use it, have privacy, and then having the bathroom be actually ADA, so making that whole wall into one big, bigger space so that a wheelchair can be able to turn around and have the shower in there.
And to make it so that, so right now the men's really have to go through and not everybody feels safe with all the.
Would this be one unisex bathroom as well?
We, there was a plan for having the second one.
I think he actually put in three bathrooms total.
Two public.
One of them being accessible, one being part of the building that would be utilized by the employees.
So a staff bathroom?
Yes.
Yes, and then one additional bathroom where it exists in the.
The garage.
East side of the building, yeah.
Okay.
And making it so like the window could open up to face out onto the lawn beach area.
Looking at the beach instead of the other direction. Talked about skylights, revitalizing electricals.
This is very dark.
It's really, really dark in there and skylights would just change the whole thing. Widening a sidewalk around so that it would become accessible, more accessible.
No extreme construction, just the walls are all, how did Ralph describe them?
It's concrete block.
Yeah, it's not.
It's concrete block.
Nothing is, oh my gosh.
The structural, there's very little structural in terms of the walls that we could see.
It's all cosmetic-esque.
Now, we haven't had the contractor look at it to find that for us, but.
Right, we're just going on Ralph's expertise of, yeah.
Okay.
I, one, just one little feedback as I saw the design. Are there gonna be new windows where this walkway is now coming around, are there new windows there?
For the, you mean like for the, where the front is, right, where we have the opening window now, where are you talking about or?
When you come down, when you come down the walkway and that's just also all concrete, it'll look like in a design that there were windows on that side.
I don't think he proposed any new windows, I think he proposed replacing the existing windows that are now blocked.
Okay, good. Just hook in line that the break-ins and vandalism have all been coming out.
Yeah, so something that was fixing that door that could put windows on that wall, kind of the blind side of the building, you get a walk in there during the day. But at night, it's definitely blind and gives somebody access.
So trying to figure out a way to be able to have that, but then still have a, which will tamper through.
Right, well, there's no windows here now. So if there was, if you're not gonna put any new.
So if windows went in, there would need to be some sort of roll down or something so that these.
Well, the existing, where the staff stands, the existing windows fold in, there's a sheet that folds up, sheet that folds back.
Right.
And then they're just closed at night, closed and secured at night.
So just about replacing the existing windows, not adding any.
And they have that same design, it's the.
Yes.
The fold, okay, okay.
Yeah, so it's not like a glass window or anything.
Yeah, we don't want anyone else can invite anymore of that.
Right.
Okay.
And we probably would even, you know, during the construction, have the option of reinforcing those to a greater extent than they are now.
Okay. Any other?
We haven't set our next meeting date yet, but we have to do that.
Yeah.
But we had a lot of terrific ideas.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the information, it's good to have an update.
And staff gave feedback over there too.
Perfect.
They walked around with us in the front there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks Denise. So moving on to proposed zoning question. Do we wanna add an article to the November ballot asking voters to approve proposed zoning regulations? State mails out the election balance, do you want the town to mail out balance to all registered voters related to this zoning question? It costs but $1,600 and there's an email from Julie on this.
And we have to if we wanna have.
Yes.
The zoning go into place with the changes that they worked on, we have to have it on the ballot. Because it has to be Australian.
Of course you do.
Yeah, it has to be Australian ballot.
Yeah.
Yes.
Moving on, we do it in the.
Put it on there.
I'll second.
But do you mail it out?
Yep.
I mean, there's a couple different questions.
Yeah.
There is.
One is, do we put it on the ballot, the answer would be yes.
Right.
So by consensus, you wanna put it on the ballot?
Yes.
The second question is because the state mails out the ballots, do we wanna pay $1,600 to mail it out to all residents of the town? Or just give it to them at the day of election?
Do you have any numbers on how many people voted by mail last, last town meeting?
Um, no, that would be for.
That'd be Julie Angel's. Cuz I, that's what I would wonder about that, whether or not it's, if it's, if it's a significant amount, we're there and did mail-in ballots, then we definitely have to. But if.
But if it wasn't.
If there wasn't, then.
Yeah, then maybe we should just have it on the ballot for it.
I always thought the more people vote, the better.
Right, and that's what we're wondering, how many people voted by the mail?
Where would we pull the $1,600?
That's also just cuz that wasn't part of the proposed budget or the zoning or anything else like that, we didn't think about that. Do we have something, would that be, it's not.
I guess Julie would.
Yeah.
We should have done this earlier, would have sent out.
Well, the state won't send them out, we have to send them out separately on its own ballot.
Right.
Kinda.
Is it something?
I'd like to see everybody vote on it.
Right.
But at the same time, it's zoning and do we have $1,600 to spend on?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if there's, if, if we were able to, cuz we're already putting out our monthly newsletters. Could we put a line on it, like a little paragraph in there saying, if you're, we're putting this, this is going to be put into the town meeting day thing, if you'd like to be. Yeah, if you'd like to have that ballot included in your mail-in ballot, let us know and then we can do it individually, is that workable or?
Well, actually, what I was thinking was putting a little write-up in the newsletter that said, the issue of zoning will be on our next voting day ballot.
Right.
Please come out and vote on November whatever, if you would like to have a say on the zoning.
Or please not.
And they can, you can even add in there, or they could request.
Request that.
That's the biggest thing, making sure that it's open, yeah.
Cuz that covers everybody.
Yes.
Cuts that concept.
I mean, unless it's like more than 50% or even more than like, like 35% of people voted by mail, I feel like it's not worth it financially to dump all that.
Right, and it's not that they can't request one individually.
Right.
So, yeah, so I say we put something like that in the town's.
Especially cuz it's already been absorbed in terms of.
Yes.
We'll put it on the ballot, it'll be here, Election Day, if you would like one, when they elect you.
Right. Or come in and we can give you one to.
Or so if anybody that can't make it, they have the officer just contact, the office officer, unless you got in advance, there are people here today doing that, so.
And maybe it also might be a good reminder to say, you know, because of new law statutes, like we have, we are mailing out all ballots. So, but in part of that, we're not mailing out this just because of, yeah.
And what about the wording on it?
Yes, I was just gonna bring that up, so the wording on the ballot, shall the town amend Wallingford zoning regulations and thus make the changes found in the draft dated August 5th, 2024? And Erica Burner has, prefers to word adopt rather than amend because the zoning regulations are almost completely rewritten.
I don't see where it says amend, it says make changes found on the draft.
This is, this is the wording.
That shall the town amend.
From the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Right.
It says shall the town amend Wallingford zoning. And Erica says to replace amend with adopt.
Maybe a rewrite, but it still has the skeleton of the original, so it is amending.
We're amending it.
How about adopt new?
Yes, so.
Adopt new volume.
I agree with that too, so I can see where she's trying to say that, but I don't think it's.
We have zoning now, so we're not adopting, as already, right?
No, because we have zoning regulations, it's a rewrite, so it's amended, even if it's a big rewrite, it's still a rewrite.
It is, yep.
So I would say amend, does everyone, is everyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Gilbert Hart Trustees' Appointment. The Select Board appoints a citizen to act as town's liaison to the Gilbert Hart Library's Board of Trustees. This comes down from the state. Here's a list submitted by Michael Luzader of trustees willing to serve as liaison. Michael Luzader, Jennifer Galusha, Pat Bowen, Todd Galliano, Pat Getz, Lorna Norris, Frank Perillo, Deb Scranton. We are welcome to choose someone on the list or not on the list, what would we like to do?
Three-year terms.
What's town?
Michael said it was three years.
Three years, so it's a three-year term.
What's the purpose of the liaison?
Does it now?
Well, I was Pat Prager for a long time.
Yes. But she stepped down from the library, so.
Yes.
So we don't, we haven't had someone, the subcommittee hasn't had a liaison, it's someone who reports back to the select board on what's happening.
For their budgets and stuff.
Exactly.
And whoever that is has to be cookies, so. First point.
So, so I know the one person who asked to be the liaison was Todd Galliano, but all of them are willing to serve. So do we have?
Not really.
Because I mean, the only person that we, we really see is Mike, Mike will come in and then, and talk to us about things, or like when we were doing the budget things, he was saying, this is why we wanted to ask for the extra two grand, like.
That's right.
But if Todd is volunteering, openly volunteering, everybody else is saying, I'll step in if I need to.
Right.
Is he aware of the, cuz I know he's very busy.
Yes.
Is he aware of?
He really wants to do this, he's willing to make this time.
Just checking, cuz sometimes he'll say, yeah, I'll do it, but not really know what's. Does he go, does he regularly go to the?
He is regularly going to meetings, yes.
I'll make a motion that we, we follow the recommendations from the Gilbert Hart Library Board of Trustees and nominate Todd Galliano to be the liaison to the select board.
I'll circle.
All of those in favor?
All right.
Fine. We have a liaison. Okay. Okay, our next order of business is committee resignations. We have a note here from Maria French on Wallingford Day, we have a letter from her. I don't know if I need to leave it in.
I, I wrote a letter today, if you accept her resignation, it's signed, cuz she's done so much.
Yes, yes, so Sandy's written a letter, do we accept Maria's resignation? And I would just like to say, just a thank, a thank, a deep thank you to Maria for all her work on getting Wallingford Day up and running again, I have a letter here to sign. Shall I read the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Dear Maria, on behalf of the town of Wallingford, the Wallingford Select Board would like to extend our deepest appreciation to you for serving in a leadership role on the Wallingford Day Subcommittee for the past several years. Your vision bringing back an annual Wallingford tradition with generations of citizens, reuniting with friends, families, and neighbors through music, games, food, fun, and laughter, has been a remarkable achievement. Your generosity and the giving of your personal time, willingness to always lend a hand, and dedication to the town is greatly appreciated. The Wallingford Select Board with regret accept your resignation. We wish you well and look forward to seeing you in a different capacity at Wallingford Day next summer. Sincerely, Wallingford Select.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Yeah, pretty great.
It's like you're used to like. That's what I really like to do here.
And so I have a copy of this for us, we all sign, yes?
We all sign it.
We all, we all sign this.
Okay.
Thank you, buddy.
Yes.
Shannon and Denise just wanna spend more time on the facilities thing. And Wednesday, we had a person from the State Forest and Parks come down and give us materials and showed us how to use the software to do an inventory. And so we're gonna start working on that, but I think that the board would function just as well with the five we have rather than going to a seven. Yeah.
Do we need to do anything to change that?
You can just by consensus, accept the resignation and do another by consensus.
Okay, so do we accept the resignations?
Yes.
Yes, we accept the resignations, and do we accept a five-person shade tree board?
Yes.
Yes, we accept a five-person shade tree board, thank you.
Yeah, that's more help ever had.
Okay, so moving on, revised VEM buyout program documents. Last full, town officials send the necessary documents. For the two Wallingford flood-prone properties, the young application was rejected because there was no damage to the home. Now, the Hunter application is going through the FEMA process, but Craig Hunter has since deeded the property to his son, Ben Hunter. Therefore, some documents had to be resubmitted, including the enclosed deed restriction form as well as the voluntary participation form. Do you, do you wanna authorize me to sign them on behalf of the town?
There may be a few others, so just in general, just on this one buyout.
Okay.
Cuz you've already done, I mean, you've already approved the select.
And that won't, it doesn't, the federal government doesn't care, they, I mean, well, they do, but they don't.
Start from scratch.
Okay.
So resubmitting everything.
Oh, wow, okay.
Does that start the timeline again for them?
Yeah.
Huh?
Does that start the timeline again for them? That sucks.
Oh, wow.
That's terrible.
I don't know why they did it in the middle.
Not only, not only did they redo their deed, the man that they were working with is gone, so now they're gonna rescind it.
Oh, no.
But that way you can do it by consensus for Kathy to sign any of these updated forms, then we'll.
You had your way.
All yours.
Thank you, okay.
Same goes, you were just.
Okay, moving on to select board comments concerns. Well, you already addressed your issue with GPS earlier this evening. So, okay, moving on, is there any other business?
So are we all good with your new friend?
Well, she, the map that was filed in Timoth shows the house in Timoth and the town line.
Oh, it does?
Yes, I sent both of you that email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still.
Well, that's not okay.
You follow, you haven't followed along what happened?
No, I, I read from what I read here, yeah.
And this is the map, right?
No.
No.
That's very old.
No, I emailed both of you the one that she, it's very similar to the one in the application that started this one.
So the people, I think it's the names.
One here in this town does not have the house or the town line on it.
It needs to be the same in Timoth as well.
Well, that's what we agreed on at the meeting.
Yes, so that, that breaks the agreement.
Are we turning?
So, I don't know what the house is up on, West Hill, right?
Yes.
West Hill applied for a.
Lot line.
Lot line adjustment.
Oh, Sid and Taylor's.
In the process of doing that, the maps that they submitted showed the move, they moved the town's property, the town line also, to put the house back in the town of Timoth. And I saw that and like, and my question was. And I saw that, and I'm like, and my question was, why is a lot line adjustment moving the property line? So, that's what kind of stated this. I think, what's his name, had to say, what? He said, he started, no, he kind of...
Oh, John Tiffany, yeah.
Yeah, and it's like, so, first of all, why is that even in there? And I said, "We don't want that in there." Well, Erica had already approved the lot line adjustment with those maps in there, so... Then they come in a big hurry, they gave the, we said, "No, take it out before you file it." And then there was a big rush, we needed it by Monday.
Yes.
And we said, we both agrees, take it out, that's not out of the lot line enough.
And we have the four points that Mark came up with that needed to be agreed to, and in conversation, they was all agreed to, and the town line was removed, and the house was removed from the map. And it is that way in Wallingford, but it seems to be that in Timoth, it has the town line on the map that's Timoth and the house in Timoth.
This is the third time this has come up, that's all.
Yeah, and we, actually, in this process, found the original charter change that moved the town line from having the house in Timoth to put in the house, the original, to put in the house on the state, because people didn't want to go vote, they had to dip.
Should contact?
Or vote, they wanted to come down here and their horse is on. So, they literally petitioned, petitioned the states to move the town line so the house would now be in Walling, in Walling. So, that's the original, so, as far as where it is, it's a done deal, but the rest of this...
And the issue then also is that the, if this is the, if this somehow makes it into reality, then we're losing that off the grand list.
And we've already spent about a lot to get it back on.
Yes.
I mean, Julie had a memo about that, too, didn't she?
So...
Or maybe it was, "We should not be endorsing any documentation that indicates Taylor houses in Timoth."
Yeah, that's my memo. That's my memo.
Yeah, that's Sandy's memo.
Okay.
Okay.
John Tiffany even said it in the meeting, because Kathy, John, and I, and the surveyor, that any document that shows the house in Timoth will eventually rear its ugly head in the future, when maybe some of us aren't working here anymore. It just needs to be a clear thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Did the charter change get filed and...
I just asked Sandy that.
It's my understanding it did.
Okay, then, what she submits for maps, they accept, that's their problem.
The good thing is, all of large maps on it, there's a paragraph that says, the town line is too vague, and it needs a full survey to actually verify where the town line is, so... That's on there.
Okay.
I guess the biggest problem with this thing is, the surveyor called Sandy and went up on top, hurrying down the other because of the stipulations and stuff that we have put on, so...
Yeah, okay. So, that is our other business. Another business of...
So, what does it, what does it end as? Like, so we're just waiting for them to take this off, or?
So, everything in, everything that we had requested is filed in Wallingford, the way we asked it to be.
Right.
Right, everything in Timoth has the original maps on it. So, as far as Taylors are concerned, everything that they're done is done. So, the only time this is gonna come back to haunt us again is when we reassess.
They'll come back.
Well, won't it come back to haunt us also, like, if they have an emergency at their house?
No, because right now...
They have a Wallingford address.
Yes.
Yeah, because the house is in Wallingford, so, Wallingford response. But when it gets reassessed, unless we let the reassess, you know, the people that are...
Assess or no.
Assess or no, that stays the way it is.
Yes.
The guy that said, "Who says what?"
But then we might get into a thing when, if Timoth does a reassessment at the same time.
Yeah, but again, if they look at the deeds in the, in the recorded records, it shows the charter change, so...
That is property of Wallingford.
Okay.
Okay.
Quite a process.
So, we've done everything on our end that we can possibly do?
Yes, yeah. Yep, okay. Maurice Duchesne has installed a lock box at the concession stand, so the money bag can be locked inside on weekends. And Brian Ferguson is completing the installation of the surveillance system. It's done, and it is done. That brings us to the end.
We good? I'll make a motion?
I'll second it.
Meeting adjourned.